Cameras on.
Okay, it's a matter of public hearing here today. I allow 15 minutes for each one of them. And the first one is garbage waste. For you that don't understand what I'm talking about, right now they went up almost $12.65 per customer to $13.09, a dollar and nine cents field judgment. We're always charging each residence $5 per household. So that was leaving under the old range of $7.69 difference. And other new rates on $8.69 difference. That difference was coming out of a general fund. So last meeting, there was a motion was made. And I asked that we have a public hearing this evening, this today, April 13th, to a public hearing to a discussion of a garbage rate. And the new rate will go from $5 to $7 on your garbage. So your total bill will be $40. Come effectively made a person on your bill. You send out with your water, trash, and your sewer. I hope for discussion. Oh, we should've went on $5, is that right? Nobody say anything. I think we should've went $5, not nobody say anything.
Oh, yeah, maybe a lot of stuff.
I'll leave this year on what we made, $4 dollars this year. It's just covering, it's just relieving the relief of general fund.
So the town will still have to pay a small amount?
Well, I'd pay $6.09 instead of $8.09. Yeah, we still got $6.09, just walk by that house. Less than $400, people, $400 residents in the town area. Use it as math. So $800 relief to the, it would be a little more than $800 for a bit of stuff. But a lot of them, because they've got their own jobs or something, but they're feeling it though. But roughly $800 benefit to our general fund. Is that right this year? And that contract comes up in December this year with Progressive Waste Solution, that's the name of the company. Public Jury is wanting to negotiate with them. Archie Bill, he's on the Public Jury, I called him already. So when they get ready to go into negotiations, I hope I would like to be involved with it.
The two miles said here, they got the old temporary.
There's a 1% tax system that when you buy anything, it goes towards this. But it doesn't serve everything for our town, for its collection, pay the papers, Progressive Waste Solution. It's that more math, our garbage rate. This is put in the paper.
You want it put in the paper?
Yes, and it's put on the door, put on the door. And, you know, before people come after the meeting, but they're playing all the ads and the dotted things, withdraw.
Well, sure, I don't complain.
David, did you say this is gonna still be the same garbage company?
Yes, until December.
Till December?
Yes, yes.
Then it's taken over, that's what it's.
Well, I don't see them doing negotiations until December. I don't know if they were going to do a company or what, I don't know. Wait until December.
But the $2 going back immediately?
Made a person, made a person. Made a person, if he's gonna, $5 on your car and $7, so it'll be $40, that's water, trash, sewer. Sir? There, Mr. Smith, right there. Y'all have seats where the public hearing may be right now. All right, where you start? That's Mr. Ron Smith there, good to see you.
Hi, David Williams, I'm manager of Kenny America. I've got him in there.
I've never, Mr. Ron Smith, so that's real nice gentleman. Hi, Matt Flynn. How you doing? This is, we're paying for a public hearing. You want to help? Okay.
Okay, I'll call the name here in a few minutes.
Can you draw the license this time?
Yes, I did, now I'm gonna come and talk to my page. I gotta be five in the office.
You don't hurt?
Well, I'm in those points of work. She leaves. He's real aggressive. Well, she was out running around. Mom had to take naps. They said she was a little nasty.
Okay, time is up on our garbage weight for our public hearing. We will now go in for a public hearing to discuss the L Y 2016, that's L Y 2017, the Indiana Community Development Block Grant. What this is, I have a sample ballot here that's been sent to us. And under the activities that's involved with this grant is our sewer treatment plant, new sewer collection, existing sewer collection rehab, out of water, water for fire protection, and streets. Now, I should've mentioned this. Out of the sewer is $1 million. The new sewer is $800,000. Existing sewer collection is $800,000. Corporate water is $800,000. Water for fire protection is $500,000. The street is $600,000. And in this being a public hearing meeting, I would like to see it go toward our streets. We just had a million dollar work. We just got through with our sewer plant. Our sewer rates are where they should be right now. Our water is, I think our water is excellent. And I know it's one of the cheapest rates in the state right now. And we have plenty of water for the fire protection right now. We have great pressure. And so I'd like for this to go toward the streets for this opening up for the public for discussion.
I got a question, David. When we get to the grant, would our people be doing it or would we bid it out?
I'm sure that'd be bid it out. If they were $30,000, they would have to bid.
The one we need.
Would it just be for filling in potholes or would we actually resurface it?
I would say resurface it. No, this is for $600,000.
Oh, $600, okay. Shame not got 1211, we got 34.
It was $50,000 when we did it. $50,000, and that was several years ago. That was the end of, heading in straight all the way out of Highway 110. 190, 190. That was $50,000, that's straight.
Don't pay much.
And it's probably double that today.
David, is there ever a chance you think that we'll get rid of some, I've worked on our houses?
Possibility, but that comes on the Quarkback Agriculture USDA. And if we hear of anything like we did before, we'll let everybody know, you know, like we did the time before. I think you had some work done, Chip, like this.
Yeah.
But I haven't seen anything gone across, and I'm sure Mr. Gunnell had either, or it been dropped my attention.
I've got a bad seal on my, on my living room floor. I don't know what may be done.
But like I said, if we hear of anything, with everybody, you know, notice be put out, you know, everybody be informed of that. We have that one file too. What you got with that?
Yeah, our, 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 quick ass.
Yep, so let you put that on air. We hear anything about it, that's another side of everybody.
It's hard for women to have work, to be at home.
And I don't remember what the limits was, the limits down that that was done, and.
I don't know.
I don't know, I think some people got rid, I don't remember how it was done. I'm not sure.
Yeah, some did. Mine, one thing I had was my bathroom was fixed for many times.
Okay.
Which I really appreciate today.
Yeah. I know you and Mr. Clarence Hudson, I think we did a few winter. I think, I'm just trying to go recall, that's several years back.
Well, so the rates are still in, so we had 2008's over the point four.
But you'll know about it when you got the car.
And there, we need to add work on these streets.
That's right, I'm aware of that. And we, we're, the town had started working on that. And not through with it. But, and the way the weather's been, you know, it didn't come out of the winter. But that's, that's still an ongoing process. We haven't got about it, we're working on it. So I know several places need to be fixed right now.
Unfortunately, the weather keeps it terrible.
Weather keeps it down, cold and everything else. We have a roller, you know, once it's put out, they run a roller over, ice and damn real good. Same thing, that cold makes this, this holding up pretty good.
Yeah, shame not gonna build this time to handle it.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I've noticed about it.
Our poles are still filled till that road.
Yeah, y'all drove that, done?
That's what I'm saying, they're still filled, they're not.
They're not.
It's not eating it out.
They're not dished out, okay, well, that's good, that's good for them. That's good to you. But it's more than gonna be done. And I don't, of the wealth, I say I've helped Mr. Jeff for 10 tons last time, told him next door, I'll get 20 tons. See, doesn't go bad. Once they bring it in, the Public Jury is gonna haul it far. So that's gonna cut out an expense for the town. I talked to Mr. Norwood Hickman and our Public Jury, Mr. Ruskin. And they said, yes, they can haul it far. It comes out of everything. And they dumped this stuff, it's a black looking, mind me, a roofing tar, it's not roofing tar. And it said, when it sets up, they take it back over the bucket and it breaks loose, so they load it on a trailer, make it out, put it in a hole, run a roller over. So it's not something that goes bad or forget it. So, but that's the process, it's still ongoing. Bear with us. Take more minutes. Do I have a motion that we're looking at now? Okay, I'm arguing our motion, okay. We will all right now. But on our public hearing, that's the, that's what I'd like to see, you know, a flat towards the streets. I mean, I'll, anybody objecting to that, or?
None of them are.
Put it on the streets, you might. Yeah, yeah, I, I haven't really made an objection to it.
I say it needs to be applied towards the streets.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Going around, it's a lot of these.
Yeah, that's something else that's gonna be working on. They got a new public work directory in the red. I've got his name on our list, Mr. Tommy Hopley. Al Schumacher, he retired last month. And this guy has been a real open to us. And I'm gonna get a hold of him and see if, they have a machine to make signs, road signs. And we do, maybe just for the cost of the material, get them to make them. They've got to be able to. Because those signs are, they're expensive.
But we got a lot of poles being, sometimes they're holding too.
They don't stop look.
Those bushes come out so far, you can't see nobody going in.
I'm in Grandville, I got hit for that.
But while we're on the signs, click though, Mr. Ron Smith, he's here, been very helpful to us and also Bogart Lecter. I have his name and our name right with it. If y'all seen any street lights that are out, let us know. And we can hold a last, make up a fix.
There's one, it's right here. Because at the last poker tournament, we kept seeing it go out and it'd get, it'd get like a really light color and then it'd bright, and it'd go out.
Where's that at?
She was at the one right here.
No, it was right here.
The one right here, the same one that's been, if you hit it with a set of headlights, it'd go off?
No, we were, we were at the poker tournament. Right now, we're about to say. I know, we're sitting on the sidewalk and we could look back and see it. So we don't let anybody, because we're here in Stewes.
Okay, because we had probably a pistol on the corner.
Is that on the corner street?
We had probably was the one right here on the corner, heading in 110. I could park in Stewes parking lot and if my headlights hit you pointing in that direction just right, it would turn the light off. And I drive a Crown Big, so there's no reason that nobody should even remotely touch the light.
Probably with the sale, we can change that up.
Okay. The ones on clicker bank, is that Larry's business or is that from the two?
That's probably, I think.
Yeah, that's Larry's business.
Yeah, that's Bogart Lecter's too.
Well, I'll get a hold of Larry, if he got one out, that'll worth it. And you get back down, ain't saying nothing. Oh, that I was not turning around and I can't even throw the fork? Well, I think I spunked it there. But once you get that far down, you're committed.
Yep. Been a while since I've been up there.
I love the taste.
Take three more minutes, then we go into our record meeting. And Mr. Smith, when you get through, y'all.
Okay, appreciate it.
We'll get them back tomorrow. Was that, these flags? I thought they looked familiar. Just around the little red.
I said, wait, no. Okay, it's six o'clock, we're gonna move into our regular public meeting, we'll call it the order. And we please stand. Brother Al is gonna lead us invitation. And we apologize if the flag went out to the historical sites for the festival, it got back over here. We have one on that drawing back there. I know that's not very good, but let's face it, when we say the place late now, we're tired of it, I'm sure, Mr. Al.
A most gracious and a powerful, we thank you for giving us this wonderful day with the sunshine. Give us the rain, it's part of the time that we need it. We just pray that you watch over Maryville and keep them in safe hands, Lord. Pray that you give us the guidance that we need in order to accomplish something that would be unpleasant in your eyes. We pray that you watch over the group and others that need to go home. We're just thankful, Lord, for everything that you do for us. In this family, we pray. Amen.
Wait, God, I pledge.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any, any add-on to the amendments to the agenda?
It's on the 23rd.
Okay, I'll put that up here.
It's actual 9th. And it will be Wally. Wally.
Wally?
Yeah.
I guess that's Wale, huh?
No, that's number 11. Sales, sales, hash.
Okay, the 23rd, that's the, Jack Hagle. Okay, the twenty-third, that's uh, Jack Cagle, okay?
Hang on, Tom, on that, it's seven thirty.
Seven thirty. Um, approval of amendments that presented for the public hearing, where's your meeting on March ninth, two thousand fifteen, I have a motion. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in care, approval of financial statement presented from March two thousand fifteen, I have a motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approved. Uh, Mayor, come in, we have the twenty-third, moving Wally and Jack Cagle, provision, uh, right now, hanging in the street down here, I think everybody knows where that's at.
What time?
Seven thirty, seven thirty. Moving to Wally, the twenty-third. Moving on, under our old business, uh, uh, we've had discussion for a public hearing pertaining to our garbage rates, uh, is any discussion before we go into a motion for a raise in the garbage rates? By ten dollars, come in favor, you made the first, two thousand fifteen, any discussion? I have a motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Under our old business, we have today with us, Mr. Joseph Devilfield. What this is, is a call for an election we held in the town of Maryville, October twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen, to override levy and collection of additional can gear, four cent sale, and use tax, for then the city, for the purpose of funding maintenance and operations of the police department of the town. I'd like to say one thing before I turn this over, Mr. Devilfield, Dorritter is the only one with nine cents on the dollar. Everything else outside of Dorritter is eight point seven five. Majority stuff that is bought from people inside the citizens, outside the citizens, they buy it from Dorritter, or they are, and when they are, you still pay nine cents on the dollar. And I hope everyone joins in to pass into this, uh, uh, four cent sales tax, October twenty-fourth, I'm turning it over to Mr. Joseph Devilfield, Mr. Joseph.
Thank you, Mayor, my name is Jake Devilfield, I'm a bond worker from Lake Charles. I was asked to prepare the documents for you to authorize calling of the election. The city, we have two resolutions to pass, in order to get the election on the ballot for the election, October twenty-fourth of this year. The first resolution is a resolution ordering a special election to become the town of Maryville, Louisiana, on October twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen, to authorize a levy from a one quarter, one percent sales and use tax, upon sale, retail, the use, the lease, or rental, with consumption, storage, or use, or consumption of candle, personal物品, on sales of services in the city, making application to state policy mission, connection there with. If you have any questions about this, I'll be happy to address them, they say ten year, one quarter, one percent sales tax, to be on the ballot in October.
Larry, on the third, uh, that we, uh, we have to provide for the, uh, the license, or we have to provide the paper and location, but we didn't really try to provide the project of it, called a special election.
This is not a special election, got that winged with the electoral, by Lieutenant Governor, August Sander, direct that to bill us about.
That's essentially a free election point.
Yeah, fine, free election.
Whatever thing going on, I know we need you.
We need, we need a motion, a second.
I have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, raise it according to the way we say it.
Second.
I'm second.
All in favor? Motion carried.
The next resolution, Mayor, is a resolution authorizing publication of the notice of prescribing to your geographic limits of the town of Maryville, Louisiana. And the purpose of this resolution is to notify those folks within the town that they can vote, those folks outside of town cannot vote. And I thought you'd give a person, you'll give me the legal description of your most recent ordinance, where you expanded your town, and that's, so, we need to about that resolution as well, Mayor.
I have a motion. All in favor? Uh, motion carried.
Mayor, I thank y'all for putting me up this early, I'll get home tonight, eat some beans.
Okay, thank you for that. Moving into new business, uh, we have Mr. Ron Smith from Cleco for the franchise agreement for the council. Uh, Mr. Ron Smith, is your sign?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, um, so glad to be here, also, I'm with my, uh, my boss, Danny Williams. Uh, Cleco's been serving the, the town of Maryville for, uh, past thirty years, uh, or not longer. And, uh, in fact, the last franchise agreement that we signed was in nineteen eighty-seven, let's do again in two thousand seventeen. What Cleco like, likes to do is, uh, negotiate with the towns and cities that we serve a little earlier. This helps us provide the power that's needed throughout our, our service territory, it helps us plan better. But it's also, uh, a win-win for the cities and towns that we serve, because when we negotiate a little earlier, we can give some incentive, uh, for the town to, to, uh, to sign a new contract a lot earlier, and that's something that I talked to, uh, the mayor, the, uh, pro mayor pro temp about, uh, this hour, uh, and, uh, and, and did that maybe a month ago. And what we're proposing now is to go ahead and, and renew our contract, uh, with the town of Maryville, a, a, a little earlier, as I stated earlier. Uh, and, and with that, give the town, uh, some incentive money to do so. We enjoy a, a great relationship with the town, we want to continue that, uh, we're very responsive to the town when things go awry. Uh, we can't always control, but we can't control it all, ask God, but we try to get our man out, uh, as quickly as possible to restore power. Uh, and we will continue to, to be that type of partner, uh, with, with the town. So, with that being said, uh, we'd like to, if, if, uh, President or the Council and the Mayor, uh, to, to introduce this ordinance, and then come back next month, uh, for ratification.
Any discussion? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Motion carried.
I have a question. You're welcome. Pass on the card here.
I don't know, I wouldn't use it. Goodness, well, this, uh, the way this would be in hand, on this, I don't know.
Number two will actually have to be, uh, I knew it kind of moved along, but I should be applying it, but, um, that's the pop ordinance, and, and amend it, two deordments, uh, would also could not be by resolution unless the resolution would state that, uh, it's the understanding of the Council that this falls within the exceptions because it is less than the absolute amount of housing authority, which may be available, but this will be a solid way to do it, if possible. I was not able to, uh, move back and forth, uh, with Mr. Gallagher, uh, with the municipal association, but the ordinance would be the best way, unless you want to go by resolution, instead of the, uh, changes and renovations that would be made to the Maryville Housing Authority, would fall within that, uh, ten percent of the act, but that's a decision that we have to make.
So we can't, I can admit that as our.
But it has to be before, notice has to be given, and we'd have to do it, uh, finalized.
That's, that's made it correct, okay.
So I guess we just need to state the votes, that we introduce it, and then might have.
Right, same way. What this is, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and read this, is, uh, to amend ordinance nineteen point two-three, and power resident district permits permitted uses, sub area A, one and two, by resolution. The housing authority over there, which Miss Debbie Goll is the, uh, manager of, uh, uh, and, is that name again?
Uh, Art Schultz.
Mr. Schultz there, uh, they have to, we come, this is our next meeting, uh, and they have to go over, it has to go over ten percent of the power, correct, I come wrong on this. Ten percent has to be amended to the ordinance, but then the ordinance, it says up to ten percent.
Right.
Is that right?
The, the value, that's exactly what it says, the, the current appraised value of the existing buildings of the Maryville Housing Authority is about a million six, which means we can only do a hundred and sixty thousand, we're actually planning on doing over five million dollars worth of work. So that's why we would need to amend the ordinance to allow us to come into the block.
And that's reason, uh, we would need to allow it for much of well, in our current year, to, uh, later we can do this. So while we're in this period tonight, uh, is a, a motion, uh, for next month, to, uh, vote on this, amendment to this ordinance, pertaining to the housing authority, uh, so they can go over that ten percent for, uh, refurbishing, whatever they want to do over there. He just gave something like five million dollars project that they want to do, so, can I have a motion on this, please?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Police personnel, uh, I don't think Mr. Keith Weaver, uh, you had mentioned that by then, Mr. George?
Ah, I thought with Chief Stelly, uh, I know Mr. Weaver was a reserve deputy with, for repair sheriff's office. And he worked, what, repair job prior to that?
No, now.
He worked, oh, that's where he worked now, repair job?
Well, I'm on leave, that's because my wife broke her knee, and they filled the slot, so I'm looking.
Okay. I had talked with Chief Stelly, Mr. Weaver got all the credentials we're looking for, I was under the impression he's looking for part-time?
Part-time, well, whatever you need.
Okay. So I just, I asked, for now, we hire in part-time, and in the future, if we have a, an opening coming available for a full-time offer, I can do an amendment to that.
Where's the, uh, hook if we lose?
Right now, we haven't lost anybody, but we're short as far as part-timers, because we've got, uh, Roy Moreno and Scott Bracken in work, but they're working their primary jobs, which a lot of times, they might be able to come in, cover the shift on the weekends, if they're lucky. Because, like, uh, Scott works in the plants in Lake Charles, and Roy works in back range. And he started again, he started again, he did.
Mr. Weaver, give us a statement about itself.
Yes, sir, I mean, uh, ten years' experience in law enforcement, prior to that, I was a federal employee as an air traffic controller dispatcher. Did that for thirty-two years, uh, ten years in the military. Uh, I have an associate's degree in law enforcement, and a, uh, English major. And. I'm sorry, I live in Dorritter, Louisiana, I'm about eighteen minutes away from where my house is. I have my wife here, Brenda, uh, she supports me on this, and I also have a son who's a firefighter in Dorritter. He's married, uh, Randy, and I have two grandchildren. So, and law enforcement is, law enforcement's important to me.
Your slave time in Oregon?
Uh, I've spent ten years in the Air Force, and then I spent five years in the Army Reserve, because the Air Force was full, so I went Army Reserve, I spent five, I had a total of fifteen, but for a total of thirty-two years, total of that would go in time. I'm retired, air traffic, so, and I just sit at home, wash soap operas, so, I can, you know, depending on my status, my dress, you know, what I'm doing in the backyard, you call me, I can be here in twenty minutes, so.
You're retired, I think you did a good job, I'd be retired, you got the time.
I got plenty of time, matter of fact, as I was a reserve, when I was still working as air traffic, and I was a reserve officer with Borghard Parish Sheriff's Department, I did help, uh, uh, Shorty, here in, uh, not, uh.
Pee Wee Drive?
Pee Wee, I don't know why I keep on, I, I helped Pee Wee a lot of times here, uh, because this was, the, I, I controlled the west area of Borghard. And, uh, they told me that I was the fullest time, this reservist that they had. And sometimes I would give them almost forty hours of, a month, so, and that, when I was working, so now I'm, I don't, I'm retired, I've got plenty of time, so. Is there any reason you're not still working at Dorritter as a reservist? Uh, we moved to Vernon Parish. Pee Wee thought that way. No, we're still in Dorritter City Limits, but I'm in Vernon Parish, and. Kane Lally. Exactly. And, and then, and then I was working for Sam, and the only reason why is I asked for a leave of absence, because my wife broke her knee, and I had to, uh, take care of her, you know, by broken knee, you know, I couldn't afford to nurse or anything, so I took care of her, and in January, I went back. Sam said my slot was filled, he wouldn't expect me back until May, and I said, okay, so I just put feelers out everywhere around. Hey, one other question I have for you, have you ever been determined that you'd get a job? Yes, I have, and then long, I got an argument with the mayor, and he gave me a choice. I, I, I believe in law enforcement, I believe everybody should be treated the same. When I observed that an officer was treating people differently, I reported it, and it turned out it was his golden boy, and he said, I won't have that, so. I wasn't that, no, I've never been terminated.
Are you willing to come and power with the reading?
I'm coming, I'm hardly.
I'm in order, is it?
Yeah. If you need, I'm, I like to, put in on my status, what I'm doing at the house, whatever, need a shower, whatever, I can leave in twenty minutes. And that's not speeding.
Speaking of speeding.
Well, let's hope, let's leave that to the public, this is, uh, um, is any further discussion, Council? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion to hire, uh, Mr. Keith Weaver as a reserve to town, carry him in.
I recommend Harvey may ask a question.
I'll say.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, I have faith, I have faith in this, he will, he'll go to my brother's church.
We got two names, Jack Cagle? Two, four, okay, okay, so, motion passes then. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Move right on, we have a, a number four, resolution to the Bogart Parish Police Jury Requesting Assistance at the end of the road along Hennigan Street. What this contains to, we have a buildup of dirt on the side of the road, they have a paint thing, which I want, we're gonna try to relieve water off that road. It's moving the dirt back away from the road where it can drain, so to have a pocket of water sits there, and all it's doing is going underneath a road, and, and the traffic, the weather is, uh, is, uh, it's not good for a road. Uh, this is something we want to try to do, and, uh, all the way we're gonna know it's gonna work is try it, and, uh, is any discussion? If not, I'd like to have a motion to do this with the resolution, Police Jury. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Motion carries. Number five is the adoption of a citizen participation plan and citizen's plan procedure handed upon Jennifer Hatfield as citizen plan officer for flight with the L-Flight two, uh, twenty sixteen, L-Flight twenty seventeen, Louisiana, Lynn, Level Block Grant, uh...
Hey, Jennifer, say yes, can I have a big gesture?
Yes. That's motion, that's second.
How's that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Number six, authorized the chief elected official to proceed with the development of the LCDPG application taking into consideration views of protests made by citizens, ten public hearing whether those that were unable to attend and view of the governor's body. And what this is pertaining back to is what we had in the, a public hearing was the, uh, the streets, the grant for the streets, and, uh, I'd like to have a motion to proceed on with this.
I make a motion.
And that's second.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
And, uh, adoption of the procedure policy for flight with the LCDPG program, uh, have a motion for that?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carrying, uh, and number eight, authorized the chief elected official to proceed with procurement and selection of professional sheriffs with the purpose of assisting in the development of the LCDPG application and implementation of this project, have a motion for that. Motion carrying. We have, number nine, the Chris Hawkins issue, he's on here yesterday, that was, uh, community wellness, and I think everybody knows where that's at.
I don't, uh, I seen that in there, and I...
It's right on the one ten up here.
On the twenty.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Right, right there.
Well, the water park used to be?
Right, and they have a dentist too, that, well, they did, I don't know if they, he was booked with here tonight, but we had, they came here last year, uh, talking about the doctor, the day, and the dentist, the day that was here, and that's what this is all about, so we'll move right on now to, uh, it's open for public participation, now it's your turn to come.
Okay, we got a speaker, he's a law officer, and he, when you say something to him, so, something needs to be done.
It was, I quit at seventy-five miles an hour, tried to catch you, I, I could not catch you.
Is this good?
He was leaving out of Dorrit, coming to work, he left, he nowhere probably, didn't want to be here.
I got behind him at a red light, and when he took off from the red light, I never caught him until a truck got in front of me.
And this isn't the first time, the first time was when he ran the red light down the river, when the red light, in our police car.
My chance when I leave, I work on the same side of town as he leaves home, so we catch each other a lot on the side, and he ran off, and I, I drive that big black truck, it wasn't because I couldn't catch him, I stopped at seventy-five miles an hour, because , and when we got to PCA, with people coming out, we just have one red light, never slowed down, no red lights, nothing, I stopped because the traffic was coming out, and that's when the truck got to me, and it was bad, and I feel that I had a video of it.
Are y'all willing to write statements on him?
Yes. Also, something I want to put on Facebook about, uh, flashlights at, at people, at night time hour, past, yeah.
Yeah, Maryville cops, somebody's speeding coming through, you know, doing sixty-four, sixty-five, they flash their lights at them, when they're like in front of Boise, headed into Dorrit, like they're gonna pull them over, but when they slow down and stop, the sheriff's department, call that one.
Well, they, it really caught my attention, because how fast he could go.
I followed him home one night, I followed him with my lights on, right, doing ninety to Maryville, and he never stopped, and one came to tell me, I was like, that's good. Something needs to be done.
Jordan, you not wanna be in here, we, we got some of you.
Okay.
You're a police officer, you're supposed to obey the law just like everyone else.
I went behind you today, coming to Maryville, doing seventy-five, I couldn't catch you.
I never got above seventy-eight.
I had it on video.
Seventy-eight?
I mean, I can't do seventy-eight.
What was apparently more than seventy-eight?
Coming over here, coming to work, 'cause I didn't know if, uh, roads still do yet or not.
He got that phone?
He does, and I could, 'cause I knew he was in court this morning, I didn't know if he got out of court yet or not, so I wouldn't have called him.
Hey, but in Maryville, you didn't come here, you went to the Shell Station.
Yeah, I wouldn't have called him, he came over here.
That's twice.
Seventy-eight.
Seventy, I can't do seventy-eight, I'm waiting for work.
No, you would stop someone doing seventy-eight, and write my ticket, can we grab you a ticket?
You went for PCA, there were people coming out of PCA, they just had a major red there, and when people coming out, and you never slowed down, you never hit your brake lights, nothing, and I had my video, I was videotaping, I stopped, I slowed down at seventy-five, coming up on that entrance, and a truck got between us, that's the only reason I slowed down, because I was on a plane entrance, and when I got out of that truck, I couldn't catch you the second time, when I finally caught you, it was going in front of you, and I was in a big truck.
That's scary, that's scary to me, 'cause we can't do that, I would have tickets a mile long if I got caught doing seventy-eight miles an hour down the highway, and I was speeding into the Maryville was fifty, I could catch you by now, I'll ask you a long when you get that sign.
I'll go forty-eight miles in there.
I could catch you by now, man.
Y'all check the oil on those cop cars when you change shifts? 'Cause one of the cars was over the shop, four quarts low in oil.
Uh-huh, it was mine, because it burns off all out, every three days I have to add oil to it.
But if you check it every day?
No, there's no oil there. Don't know, it burns it, we've had issues with that car since, far down, I know the hair.
That one was over there at Harmon, or that, what do y'all call the shop, right?
I don't know, I don't know.
That's the one that they worked on there?
Yes, ma'am, but it was like that, it was like that with Cody Martin here, and it's been through the shop, and they gave my police at all then, and in fact, three days before Robert Earl took it to the shop, and they put the oil in, I put over a half gallon. We had to look that, try to find the oil these days, can't find it, there's no leak due to the burner, in fact, I had it all through today before I left my house.
Well, if it's that bad on law, you still don't think you're running it no seventy-eight miles an hour on the hood?
I'm trying to fully understand why it becomes a Dorrit down here, seventy-eight miles an hour, and speed of this fifty-five, I mean, this is part of this using the vehicles, this is part of the people that's using the vehicles, I can't understand that, the excuse you gave, I'm not so sure I bought that, it's trying to be more further, but I can understand that.
Yes, I came over here, and, and like I said, I didn't know if Officer Moreno had got out of court yet or not, I wasn't gonna call him, because if he's in court, he can't have his cell phone to answer.
Where's court at?
Uh, we're at thirty-sixth Judicial District, in Dorrit.
Well, why didn't we have an officer on duty?
He was on duty, but he had to go to court.
But if he had to be in court, why wasn't there someone working out of town?
We don't have...
There's no one here to work, you've got Michael Rick, well, he started the academy, where's our chief, we've got you, and who's the third, fourth?
Robert Thompson.
Where's they, y'all got four officers?
I worked last night, I didn't tend to work.
So, then you got Robert Thompson, and, and our chief, somebody needed to be there on duty, if you could, if you worked it last night, why didn't Robert or work it today?
We're not available to work, the sheriff's office, good.
So sheriff's office was in Maryville today?
They've always got a deputy right here, fairly close.
I didn't pass one on my way in today.
Mr. Brown?
Go ahead.
I go along with him, what he's talking about on speed, we've seen it, I know, a video or anything, we've seen it, but my main complaint is in Maryville Police Department, and I felt, I told Stell, you know, I can't help raising him, and I told him, we need to patrol least, uh, the city, not, some place goes, you never see a police car, come with us, or going down Station or something down by my house, you never see them walking around their house, they need to patrol the residential areas, you know, I think I said something to you about it, four, on Tyler Street, twenty-five miles an hour, and it's eighty, it's eighty.
Now, you sure the only one we ever see doing the patrol in the streets is Robert Earl?
Well, I'll tell you what, when I was on here, that's what I did every night.
Since?
I patrol all out, even around every chief's house, Peewee's, everybody's, I patrol their house, stop, look at them, see what's going on, but you don't see that, you have a bunch of the break-in killings, and then something else, maybe somebody looked at them.
These speed bumps on the roads, they said you wouldn't need speed bumps, it's cops who do their jobs, by patrolling the, the back streets?
Another thing, I don't understand why, if, how many, how many patrol cars we got?
It's, I always got three, right?
Got three, and who's got ten, Stellie got one, I know, Stellie, either one of them.
Why are the officers allowed to take?
But why can they take their cars?
I've got one, uh, Robert, she had one, had my career with one.
You don't need them taking their cars home, when they're burning fuel, or raining down on the cars, you don't need them going on.
Cars are, that's extra.
Not a big step.
Yeah, it's extra wear and tear.
I will tell you this, it's, it's a double agent, sir, 'cause you wanna have, uh, you wanna have patrol at the right amount, you also wanna have, uh, things that do produce money, such as speeding tickets, so you have, you have those things, but then you also have, the better the job, the more tickets that a police officer write, the more time they're gonna have to spend away from the district in court, unless it's written in mayor's court, uh, so the mayor can see too, but in certain cases, when the police officers are called out, they're first responders, and they beat the sheriff's department here, and other people taking the statements, we have to have them in court, uh, with the Michigan Attorney's Office to testify, or else you're gonna have offenders that are continuing to repeat and offend, uh, whether it's domestic abuse battery, or whether it's, uh, theft of goods, whatever it is, we have to go and show that we can prosecute and get a conviction, uh, with those people, so that those people who do offend and break the law do not continue to do that over and over, so that's why they are out of court, and we do have a large docket that goes through, I mean, I just got it court.
I have a problem with that, but I would have a problem with it, there was no one on duty from early this morning till five o'clock.
And, and also, that was a reserve officer, not...
Well, I mean, it, it's, it's all with budget, you can't, you can't afford to have...
With my neighbor, I'm running seventy-eight miles an hour down the road.
Well, I'm not, I'm not defending or prosecuting anyone for anything that may, may have happened, uh, I mean, I'm not saying it didn't happen, I'm just saying, I'm just telling you, you have to look at the whole picture.
I do, I put your mind to life, so I know all that, I understand that, but I also understand where some of those money issues could be better paid for, I mean, an officer driving his vehicle, a pound vehicle, to the other side of Dorrit, to work the back, that's a big offense.
And I'm worried, I'm talking more about the, an officer, so we have limited amount of officers, and we're continually trying to build up a force, uh, at the same time that we're building up a force, we're trying to write tickets and trying to protect people, and when we protect people, they do have to go to court, and may not be the first fixing, may not be the second, maybe the third fixing, before we can have all of the people there, uh, and the motion to not being filed is suppressed, and we're having to have officers there for those hearings.
I don't need anybody here who quit, but need an officer in court, no, that's not a quote.
Well, I'm just saying that, that may, we're, we're taking them away there so that we can continue the process, they don't just get to come out, write a ticket, and they're done with it, they have to actually appear and prosecute, uh, for when their court date is.
Okay, well, that officer is in court, where are the other ones?
Well, that's what I'm saying, and when you have, and when you have a limited amount of officers...
That's where they're supposed to call the sheriff's department, and get somebody over here, the chief that we have right now, that party is responsible, I can't dictate to him to do that, that, that has been his outline of my spell, so he should enforce his personnel, that whenever they have to go to court, I've talked to Ricky Moses, he's told me all he's got to do is, all they got to do is call him, they'll have somebody over here, now whether or not they're doing that or not, last month, a week ago, chief supposed to be in there, wasn't here, there was nobody working in town, I love that, I haven't seen the chief.
I haven't seen the chief either.
You know, I haven't seen him, so that one, we'll leave it right there at that, that's the part, that's the part I can go with that, I can't, I can't fire this man that has come from the chief, I hear what y'all are saying, I'm disagreeing with you.
We just think something needs to be done.
He ain't slowed the car down, I understand that, but, chief, chief's not fulfilling his obligation.
Right, not to, probably, what you said last month was, I believe you called me last Monday morning.
I did call you, but it was worse.
Yeah, Robert Earl was supposed to, I had called the sheriff's office, and he called me, and asked him if they could cover the town, whether they did or not, I don't know.
I didn't see nobody, yeah, and I was sick at that.
And last Wednesday and Thursday, when I got off Wednesday morning, and the sheriff's superintendent for sheriff's office went on duty, I called him on the phone and asked him to have a guy cover Maryville Wednesday and Thursday during the day, now whether they're doing that or not, I don't know, but I know that I called them the last two times, well, Monday when Robert Earl was sick, and then last Wednesday and Thursday, I called them, now whether they're covering, I don't know.
So where's our chief, where's our chief police?
I haven't seen, I talked to him.
He's down in jail.
Where I talked to him, so...
When does he work for the town?
It's up, it's in there, he found, he was last week, but I don't know about this week, I don't know about this week, I don't know, huh?
Mr. Keith was like...
In, in, in defense of the sheriff's department, as a reservist, I have worked here several, several months backing up Peewee, because even, and don't hold it against me, James Longhor was my supervisor, Mickey Cooley, uh, Johnson, Leo Johnson, there were several times, I'd get phone calls at three o'clock in the morning, say, can you be in Maryville at five, well, I was off, I said, sure, I'll be there, and I am, and I'm hoping to be able to give you all the same, now that y'all have, and I wish I was still in Board Guard Parish, because Ricky Moses wants me back, but, uh, you know, we bought a house, but anyway, but no, I'm hoping that I will, that I will fill that hole that y'all are needing filled right now, I'm listening to all this, and I know where he's coming from, and I know where you're coming from, I really do, but you also gotta remember, this guy works twelve hours, he is obligated by law, six hours off before he comes back, and that's a state law, that's not, that's not a city ordinance, that's a state law, there's, there's a lot of things, a lot of people, I just don't understand why he can't come back and work, did you work at the twelve hours, and especially the job that we have?
I wouldn't expect him to come back there, but, uh, it was not a safety, it's not very safe.
That's it, that's a safety issue right there.
I think the big question is, is the speed limit.
I'm not...
And the abuse of the car, uh, that, that should be a privilege.
Okay, I'm just trying, I'm not pro or con about this business, 'cause I don't know anything about, you know, the police business, what's going on there, discussing, but every time I've called them, they've always come to me, and I didn't even know, the other day, my car got caught up, that I had had to have a key made, and something was wrong with it, it wouldn't come on, and it got in there and hung, and the chief told me, he said that's what it was.
That I had had to have a teammate, and something was wrong with it, it wouldn't come on, and it got in there and hung, and the chief told us, he said that's what it was, I didn't even know who he was. He came and worked with it, stayed there about hours, so I appreciate that. And when I go out of town for a vacation or something, I call the sheriff's department and ask them if they'd go through there at night and check, and I know that they do, because my dogs lets me know, and I get back if a car comes through there, because they're used to that. And I appreciate their help, but I'm not, against them or for it, because I don't know what, you know, what it's all about. But they have come every time I've called them, the sheriff's department. And I know this man, I see him some over there, because I'm with nine-one-one, and I see him at Ritter, I don't know him, but I know his face. And when I see him, but I, I don't know anything else, Andrew Johnson?
I am.
I know.
Well, all I can tell you is my station, Stelly, I will address the issue, that's all I can tell you right now.
Yeah, and the, uh, I call them by laws, but the thing, where you know he's still, that you can make suggestions to the police department, which you can't control.
I suggest, but he's an elected chief of police, he, he has the legal, uh, the legal authority to run his department, as he sees fit, and there's, and there's nothing that, that council or the mayor can do, can do about that.
That's my only graph about it, uh.
Yeah.
And, uh, been, been able to watch a vehicle come to my house on Tyler Street, at sixty mile an hour, and I talked to them. This through, this police officer, and I talked to Stelly about it, I got pretty odd with Stelly, but I can say I raised him, and, and, uh, they need to get down there and catch a speaker for what they need to do.
They just need to do their jobs.
Yeah, totally.
I understand the town, the town really can't do anything about it, but I think it needs to be remembered, when it comes time for coronation, then who's leaving and who's staying and who's going, because.
Well, that's, uh, that's a right that we still have, when you have elections.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Make it long, man. The pressure goes to the chief, he won, huh, he won.
Oh, I don't have a call, calling, I was calling them.
Ain't nobody fighting you.
I'll call him.
Get him. He's one of the controlling men.
No, I mean, that's not me. Sure. She got.
Daisy?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, do you have an idea when they might get the speed limit sign put back up up here at the curb, where they had that wreck, somebody knocked it down?
We're about to say that.
Right here at the curb, when you're coming across the bridge, and coming around the curb?
That's always under D O T, I called them that morning, I didn't know it was down.
Oh, yeah, because you have got a sign that says you're fixing to go into thirty miles an hour? But as far as, at this moment, we could go from way up yonder at forty, and go thirty way down across the railroad tracks. We could go forty and be legal according to your signs.
Okay. I'm ready to rock this.
Yeah, some, I think some people roll just the sign with it.
Hey, what are you looking at signs, is, how do we get a stop sign at, uh, what is that?
Clear.
Clear Creek?
Is that Clear Creek Lane?
Yeah, I think so, it's the trailer park. Then people whoop out of there, they don't even look. And if there's a wreck, who's at fault?
I can have.
Because there is no stop sign.
I can have one throw up there. I can have one throw up there.
But so, like I said, me and, me and Patty come out one night to a meeting, and that guy pulled out of there.
Yeah.
He likes it.
He does. They don't even.
They don't even look.
Any, any, uh. Any further discussion? And appreciate it all coming out, I hope everybody posted the jury. Thank you. All in favor? So, well, thank y'all.